Led by Commissioner Cora Powers, followed with the invocation by Commissioner Tinsley. Please join us.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guidance in our in our performance of duties. As elected officials, we pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just for the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name, amen.
Welcome everybody and Merry Christmas if you leave early. Hope you and your family have a happy and blessed Christmas season. We need to approve the agenda, but we need to add item number twenty six. Motion to amend the agenda to add item twenty six. Is there an agreement for sale and purchase of real estate in the amount of one hundred eighty six thousand two hundred eighteen dollars? We noticed D. Blake Jr. Properties LLC and the City of Griffin property two nineteen East Banks Street, Griffin, Georgia. That motion, Mr. Tinsley. Say goodbye to Mr. Murray to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, please signal a raised hand. Six zero. Moving into the presentations and delegations, we will recognize Jimmy Smith, Fire Lieutenant, as a November twenty three strongest link in the chain award recipient. Fire Operations Officer Brian Brock will address.
Good evening, gentlemen, and welcome.
Thank you. Lieutenant Jimmy Smith has been with the Fire Department for about twelve years. He is the lieutenant at Station Three, and he just recently went down there this year, January. Last year, I'm sorry, went down there last year. And that station is about fifty years old, so it needs a lot of work. Jimmy has a lot of equipment that he uses for his second job. Most firefighters have a second job and Jimmy is one of them. So. He starts doing work around the stations. Every time I go down there, I'm like, what are you doing? Oh, he's grinding stumps, cutting down trees, planting gardens, planting trees. Uh, grading down and putting in rock for walkways. I mean, he's just doing all this. I'm like, Jimmy, you know, you don't have to do this, right? This is my home. This is my second home, so this is this what I want to do. I want to make it nice. It's that type of thing that I think that the link in the chain is actually made for somebody who's using their own things. And he won't say it, but probably his own funds and he but to improve a station that needs some improvement because he values that station. So Jimmy, we appreciate your willingness to do that and appreciate the fact that you do it without even being asked. As a matter of fact, you do it when I say stop, don't do it anymore. You keep doing it, so uh, very well deserved for Jimmy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. There are a couple of things inside the guests. He's got the. Got the Mr. T starter kit that he'll be able to wear every day. That when he's on fall. And we appreciate your service. Station Three is Crescent Road Element. Is the Crescent Road? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Brock. Moving into item two, presentation of the water distribution system. Excellence Gold Award to the water distributor distribution team by Eric Osborne. Georgia Section of American Waterworks Association Director of Water Wastewater, Brandon Lewis will address along with. Mr. Eric Osborne, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is Eric Osborne with the uh, AWWA Georgia Section Chair, right?
Right.
Um, he's going to present this award to our team today.
So I just like to say a little, uh, thank you for inviting me and it's kind of exciting to come as the Chair of the Georgia Section and present this award to y'all personally. So you can find out what this means. Um, the award is presented as a gold award and if you. Uh, you have to get a ninety five percent or above on the score sheet. And the score sheet is over three hundred questions. Uh, they had to prepare a PowerPoint of over fifty slides and then have an inspection of the distribution system on top of that. Many people that apply for this uh, award the first time, don't, don't, don't make that score. So first time out, Griffin gets it and the and they can continue getting that every single year. And when they pass five years, then it goes to a platinum award. Uh, so this is one of those that you can kind of put on the wall and add years to it. But it takes a huge effort by a lot of people. If you know anything about distribution systems, they're complex, they're detailed, and it covers safety, uh, flagging, pipelines. Uh, pump stations, everything from the water treatment plant all the way to the end customer. Uh, so I would just like to say congratulations to the City of Griffin. If Brandon has any words, uh, we're going to call up some of the staff that are participating and present this to them.
Yeah, yeah, we've got uh, several members from our. Please come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I did have a class four water license and I might come back to work.
Nice job. I gotta get to them. Thank you, Mr. Osborne, and safe travels home and to our team. We appreciate your hard work. At this time, we review financial reports for October twenty twenty three. Finance Director Deborah Manning Gilbert will address. Welcome to us, Deborah.
We're going to review the financials for October. Uh, October thirty first, we are one third into our fiscal year. Our total operating revenue is forty eight and a half million, which is thirty five point eight percent of our projections. Our total operating expense is forty million, which is twenty eight point three percent of our projected operating expenses for the year. Our local option sales tax collected is one million eight hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty seven dollars, which is thirty five point four percent of our projections. Peace loss collected is one million, five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars, which is forty and a half percent of our projections for the year.
Any questions with this Deborah? Thank you so much. Moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meeting serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side like coming for the board? Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side like? Yes. If you please say your name.
Good evening. My name is Tina Marie Marston. I live on Kentucky Avenue in Griffin, Georgia. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, first, I would like to say um, I appreciate the effort and some of the changes that are being made to the customer service policy manual. The majority of these may impact all customers. However, I would like to voice some remaining concerns for the health of a resident section of the policy. The health of a resident postponement of disconnection remains to be one time for the life of service. While the only change to this policy is to allow these customers one additional day added to the grace period, which is seven days. So I understand that the belief is that by implementing a payment arrangement policy, there will be no need to postpone the disconnection. However, I would like to point out a few things. Residents of Spalding County may have Georgia power, who allows forty five days from the statement date before facing disconnection. Georgia EMC, who allows approximately twenty seven days from the due date before disconnection. Compared to Griffin Utilities, who offers seven days from due date before facing disconnection. Had there been an additional seven or fourteen days opposed to just that one day added to the grace period for health of a resident? Then we would be comparable to other providers in this county, but we are not. And we're talking about matters that pertain to life or death. If the commission is not willing to change the postponement to annual usage, um, that seven day postponement. Then are you willing to adjust the grace period for health of a resident to be in line with other utilities in the county? Second, it's been explained to me that it would cost an average of fifty dollars, fifty five dollars per account to cover the operating expenses to reconnect services when someone is disconnected. However, the twenty five dollar after hours fee for non-field visits is essentially a double charge. It requires no additional effort or operation to push a button to restore electricity at four forty five versus four thirty. Also, the current policy contains an outdated fee schedule, and I understand with the new policy, there will not be a fee schedule because the fee schedules are updated annually. Even though, you know, the policies may not always be updated. So that does add confusion because with that current policy, the fee schedule that's in there says that the twenty five dollars after hour after hours fee is for field visit, not for non-field visits. So I've done a um, open records request for fee schedules from two thousand and ten to twenty twenty three. To see when this change was initially done and to determine if overcharges to customers have occurred. And I do encourage you all to do the same as well. Um, the life support customer distinction, it appears that this was discussed in past years and actually implemented before the tornadoes, even though I only heard it on my account immediately following the tornadoes. And it was determined by the city that the change was never authorized and subsequent subsequently it was. That distinction was removed. However, I'm really asking you. That we keep a record of citizens who need power to live because this can really be an integral part of a emergency preparedness plan like when we have the tornadoes. If we don't have a record of who needs power to live, we really don't know who who's in dire need that we need to help. Um. And the last thing is in regards to the load limiters. I know that you guys are removing that from the policy, but I really strongly encourage that the city reconsider revisiting this option for the future because the load limiter, as you know, can control the amount of amps that you send to a meter. So let's say I am disconnected, but I have oxygen or I have insulin and I have a small refrigerator. You can control how many amps you send to my meter, which means my life sustaining equipment will still have some power. So I do really encourage you to reconsider that at a later date. And I would just like to say that when I initially started all of this, um, I'm a patient advocate. You guys know all of that. I really, it's really about the health of these of our citizens. Um, I've lived this, I've been disconnected four or five times during that time period. I was over that three year period, I was in the hospital nine times. I didn't even realize it was that many times until I went back and looked at. Um, and that affected my 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 household income. It affects, you know, everything that I do and paying bills, but my goal has always been to work with you guys so that we can make sure that we have policies and practices in place where we're really considering people. Who are in positions where they it's a dire position to be in when we need power to live. And it's no, no, no place anybody wants to be. It's, I don't know if you understand how embarrassing it is just to say I've been disconnected four or five times. But I will say it if I have to say that to share my story to make sure that other people that we have policies in place where we're going to look out for people and we're going to protect each other. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on my right side like come for the board? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, left side, if you'd like to come up, that'd be fine. Welcome. Hi, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mayor Gibbs and my address is one twenty seven North Eleventh Street. Okay. Um, I just want to piggyback a little bit off of what she was saying because my mom is also on oxygen and I do think. That there needs to be a system in place to remember these people, um, especially when they've been citizens of this community their whole entire life. And then they come to a situation that no one wants to be on oxygen or have heart problems or anything of that nature. It's just a a life thing that happens. But looking at the policy, seven days, even for someone who's not on life, uh. Altering, you know, like positions. Um, it's a hard thing to only have seven days and then a day added. When most citizens only get paid biweekly, there are very few people that I know that get paid within a week to even be able to pay within seven days. It's kind of asking a lot of a person if they're in a financial strain. And she already said some of the things that I was going to say about other companies. I know my friend lives in Jonesboro and even the city of Jonesboro, they have a fixed rate for people that are having things so that they are on a fixed rate for three months or six months or a year. To help them to be able to pay uh, the bill. It's not that we don't want to pay, but if you're in a financial strain, how can you pay? And um. It's just disheartening when you live in a city that seems like they're not trying to work with the citizens of the city. And a lot of people who are having life altering um. Things that are going on, heart problems, oxygen, they only get paid monthly. A lot of them are on social security or disability. So what will a week and a day do for them? It can't, it can't help. It's it's all I, all that we're asking is that you put a more realistic policy in place. For people who are going through these situations because seven days doesn't really do much. I remember, I'm not sick or anything, but I called, tried to make a payment arrangement and the lady was saying, um, you don't have a family member or anything you can borrow from. And that is unprofessional. You shouldn't say that to me because that's not your business. If I'm calling a company who services me, you should be able to work with me. Don't ask about a family member or whoever. Um, especially, like I say, we've lived in this city, a lot of us, like my mom, she's going on eighty, she'll be eighty in January. She's been here her whole life. And when you pay taxes into a city, been here your whole life, Griffin Strong means a lot. If you want us to be Griffin Strong, then you need to consider all of the citizens and what it means to them. For all of us to be a community, we're all supposed to be working together for the betterment of everyone, not just a certain sector of people. So please consider that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else like come for the board? Last call. Moving into public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comments on specific advertised issues such as rezoning. Or since policy development, operating budgets and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Item four is received comments regarding the two thousand twenty four City Griffin Comprehensive Plan Update Draft. Add a required public hearing Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address. Welcome, Chad.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see you again this evening. Uh, as we presented this morning during the workshop, uh, we're at the tail end of our uh, comprehensive plan update process. Uh, if you remember, the comprehensive plan is a twenty year planning document, uh, which looks out uh, and establishes a vision for the city and how it will develop and how it will uh, progress over the next twenty years. Uh, this has been a year long process. Uh, if you remember, we did a kickoff uh, in November of this past year. Um, and obviously we had to kind of slow down due to the storm and get an extension from DCA, which they graciously did. Uh, we'll have to have the plan adopted uh, in February of this upcoming year. Uh, so we're working diligently to that point. Uh, we are required by law to have two public hearings. One was the kickoff, uh, tonight is the second one. Uh, so what we're looking to get here, uh, after a year long process of getting a large amount of input from the community through um, public surveys uh, that that we've done, uh, two open house sessions. Uh, we've done steering committee meetings, technical advisory committee meetings, we've done stakeholder meetings. Uh, we're looking to get another round of input from the community uh, this evening so that way we can take that information. Um, accumulate that, look at it, uh, make any necessary changes that need to be made. Um, right, the document that you have right now is is a draft. Um, and so it is still uh, in draft form and we can uh, some changes to that and do some uh, upgrades and improvements. Um, this uh, plan is right now currently uh, on the um, the agenda for this evening, but we are going to be placing it on our website as well. So that way the public can still uh, take a look at it. They can also get a hard copy of it uh, within our office as well. So I just want to make sure that that was uh, clear. So with all that being said, I am going to turn this over uh, to our consultant, who's been a pleasure to work with, uh, GMC. Uh, they're going to go uh, into a little bit more detail and then we're going to allow uh, the public an opportunity to come and speak on it for anybody who feels that uh, to be necessary. Uh, we would ask if anybody in the public does speak on this tonight, uh, that they uh, consultant does have a sign in sheet so that way we can document who spoke. And we can get uh, your contact information so that way if we need to kind of uh, reach back out to them and 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 clarify any details or questions that they have, we we can kind of do that uh, at a later date. Uh, so with that, uh, I'll turn this over to Glenn Coyne and Kalanis Johnson with GMC and they're going to go into a little bit more detail as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Uh, good evening, uh, once again, uh, Glenn Coyne with GMC and Kalanis Johnson. Um, as Chad mentioned, uh, this is a required public hearing and I'll explain a little bit uh, more about that in a second. So what we want to do this evening is uh, talk a little bit about what happens from here forward towards um, after the public hearing towards adoption. Little bit about the process that we went through so people are aware of that. Uh, Kalanis is going to talk a little bit about the public involvement that we heard. Um, and then what's in the plan and then how people can give us their comments and any questions for discussion. Um, again, tonight is a public hearing and uh, the draft was completed on December fifth. As Chad just mentioned, it's available for review. Um, it's attached to this agenda, but it will also be available through the Planning and Development Office. Um, through adoption, so until it's adopted in February, comments can be received on that document. So we don't want people to feel like tonight is it, it's not at all. Um, we will have to transmit this to the state of Georgia, the Department of Community Affairs. They review um, these documents for consistency with the guidelines and also to the Three Rivers Regional Commission. So they have a forty day review period and then those will come back and you will be able to adopt this document by the deadline of February twenty eighth. So that's kind of a little bit of a schedule going forward, but I mentioned the two groups whose logos are on the screen. Um, it's very important that we follow the guidelines that are established for us and we feel like we have all through this process. Um, they do establish a few minimum guidelines. Those are community goals, establishing needs and opportunities, identifying character areas, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then coming up with the community work program and of course, all throughout is robust and real public involvement and we'll explain how we did that. And with that, I'll let Kalanis talk for just a few minutes about the public involvement piece.
Good evening again. Good evening, sir, everybody. Um, as Glenn mentioned, the seven items on the screen here uh, show our public development process throughout this this entire planning effort. We had two public open houses. Some of you on the dance were there, some of the citizens were there as well, one June eighth and one June first. Um, stakeholder interviews, again, some of you uh, on the commission were part of that, uh, the nine interviewees, well, as some other individuals that are involved in in the city. We had an online survey for individuals who were not able to come out to meetings in person. We had a hundred and seventy two respondents. We also have a technical advisory committee. Again, these are city department heads and other city um, representatives uh, boots from the ground that provided us with some technical advisory. Uh, as well as the steering committee. Again, some of you here and in the audience were part of the particular steering committee. We had three meetings of each. Project website with um, frequent updates as well as social media posts. As Glenn mentioned, the public hearings, this is the second, there are two, this is the second one uh, that's required by Georgia DCA. Little bit about a summary of what we've heard overall. To the left, you see a graphic. These are the overall three items we heard, whether it was an online survey, whether it was a stakeholder interview or from the public open houses. Housing, housing in Griffin is was always mentioned in some way, shape or form. Also, transportation traffic, uh, particularly downtown Griffin, that was also mentioned uh, several times. Economic development, jobs, restaurants, better choices, options for your citizens. Those were the three options, three items that were uh, more frequently mentioned throughout the various processes. To the right, this is specific to the online survey where I said we had a hundred and seventy two respondents. Um, the top three reasons for people wanting to live in the city. Small town character was number one. The affordability of property and home, number two. And the proximity to family and friends, number three. So again, these are just graphics, infographics to show you a little bit we heard throughout this process. Next graphic is just a little information about the planning process. Um, there is a, we call it a word cloud to be right, that shows there's a bunch of words. Um, and you see how housing sticks out downtown. Uh, items, issues that were heard a little more frequently are larger fun. And you see, we have needs and issues, again, a requirement, um, reaching out to the public, talk about what are your needs? What are your issues? What could um, this complaint help to solve in your particular area where there's environmental, transportation, housing, economic development, and so on? We also, once we got that information, we use it to develop graph goals, objectives and action items. Those goals, objectives and action items would then morph into the community work program, which was over shortly. This community work program is somewhat, I guess, the where the rubber meets the road. There's a short term work program of projects, uh, goals, action items, and they're dictated whether it's twenty twenty four or twenty twenty eight. Which year, who's going to do it and how much money? Glenn will go with that a little more detail shortly. But in this community work program, again, it's a short term, the first five years, which you'll see shortly. And then there's a long term work program, items that although they're important, they may not be priority within the first five years, but they still deserve to be put in the long term plan. Um, these items all will morph into the draft comprehensive plan. I'll let Glenn come up and talk a little bit more about the organization of the planning document that you have and citizens could also view.
Thanks, Kalanis. Um, I wanted to pause for just a minute and and say um, to the benefit of the folks here that this is really a guide. Um, this is not intended to address every single tiny uh, issue that that came up, which we heard a lot. What we tried to do is is put this into what we call a comprehensive plan. It's to give you a guide going forward. Um, and there's a lot in here, but um, the idea is to break it up into pieces that could be implemented over the short term and the long term. So just wanted to to lay that out. Um, so the plan is organized this way that you see on the screen, there's introduction, talks a little bit about the plan. Um, then there's a pretty extensive set of data that we call existing conditions. It talks about population, um, there's economic figures in there, there's what uh, resources does a community have? Uh, what services does it, does the city provide? All of those type of things are in existing conditions. Um, then we summarize the community engagement as Kalanis just went through in a lot more detail uh, in a written uh, report. And then identify what those needs and issues are and bring that all together under the vision and the goals and objectives. Which all leads to how the plan gets implemented in the community work program. So uh, the appendix will include a lot of documentation to prove that we had public meetings, sign in sheets, um, exercise results, all that kind of, all that kind of stuff is in the appendix. So once more for uh, just to make sure that we're on the record of what our schedule was, we had to kick off public hearing in November. Um, the survey was open between May and June of this year. Um, we did have those open house workshops at the beginning of June, two of them. Um, we worked on writing the plan, putting everything together through December. Uh, the draft came together last week, public hearing is tonight. Um, and then, as we said, we will submit that for review to the regional commission and Department of Community Affairs. And bring that back to the commission for adoption in February. So one of the key components of this plan is a what is known as a character area map. Um, we do not do a parcel by parcel land use map. Um, this is not replacing zoning. Uh, this is yet another layer to describe how the community sees itself today and how it would like to grow going forward. So each of these character areas, I apologize, it's difficult to read everything on the screen, but please take a look at it online or through Chad's office. Um, to see what each of these different colors mean and what uh, why these character areas are important, what happens within each of them and what plans are are. And what plans are in place to improve the quality of life in each of these character areas. So there's neighborhoods that are identified here, corridors for improvement, there's mixed use areas. We even gave thought to what happens once the airport is relocated. There's a lot here that looks to the future of Griffin and how it's going to grow and develop. And so I would encourage you to spend some time looking at where you live, what your character area looks like. And what some of those, some of those positive action items are in each of those areas. So again, it's great to do planning and it's wonderful to put all of this together, but people could say, so what? The idea is we'd like to see it get implemented and to do that, we've laid out a community work program. Which really does say who's responsible for each item in this plan, how's it going to get done? Where does the funding for those projects come from? And be able to update it as things change. You may get a large grant from DOT to improve a road. You may have some other event that happens in the community that makes you need to change direction a little bit. And the plan is designed to allow you to be able to do that. But we've gone through this already before, it's set up as a way that it builds off of the goals and objectives into the action items. And those become a part of the implementation plan. So it looks like this, just to show you one page, so you know that we put, we put very serious emphasis on implementation. So what is the project or activity that we recommended? And again, there are page after page of this in the plan based on each of these categories. What year is the target that this will happen? This of course is the short term, so it shows the first five years. Who is responsible? Is it a city department? Is it the state of Georgia? Is it somebody, another partner that you work with? In most cases in this plan, it is a part of the city that's a responsible party. Who's a partner? Is it the county? Is it the state? Is it somebody with a regional agency? Who are, who are your potential partners out there to work with? And again, what would that cost? Is it staff time? Do we have an estimate of what that project is? Is it both? And then where would some of the funding come from? It might be general fund, it might be splopped, might be some other areas of grants, just wherever funding might be. That we've tried to identify those sources in the table. So this is really where the rubber hits the road and helps define the action plan going forward for the plan. So again, I would close by recommending that the character area section is very important to learn about each part of the community and what's happening there. And then that translates into the community work program to show how all of those things are going to be done over the short and long term. So with that, we just would like to say thank you again for allowing us to work with you. The, from, from the commission down to the steering committee, to the technical advisory committee and the staff. It's just been a great process for us and everybody's been wonderful. I know we haven't been able to get everybody's issue into this plan, but we've tried to listen, everything has been documented. And we've done our best to incorporate the things that we heard from the public. So with that, we'd like to say thanks again and I'm not sure how you want to open, manage the comments.
Thank you Glenn and Mr. Johnson, appreciate it. Before we open to the public, does the board have any questions or comments they need to address this time? Alright, so this is a public hearing. It'll be open for comments, reminder, once you do make a comment, if you'll please, put your name, address, the record on our table over there. Is there anybody on my left side like coming for the board, make any comments? You can come up first and speak and then.
You know that I'm a citizen of the city of Griffin.
Good evening, Mr. Driver.
And I come to make my voice here, I don't see nothing in the first five years of recreation. And you knew, you guys knew that I was going to come here about that. We give you our money, but yet and still, you still throw us out to the camp. Now here's what I propose. We would like for our recreation for the citizen of Griffin. To have recreation from the city. We would like our pool bill. We don't see that, let us know whether it's in there, we would like that, you spent all our money. On big fancy F-150 trucks and things of that nature, people riding around in the streets in a new truck every year. But yet and still, three point five million dollars cannot be allocated to serve people of the city of Griffin. Now, those things need to be addressed. We come constantly back and forth to you to ask you to give our kids something to do. The chief of police would tell you when the kids are busy, that it's more safer. When the pool was open, it was more safer. You guys know that we are here constantly telling you these things, not only that. On the comprehensive plan. You do this from one to twenty years. Let's retract that electric department bill contract that you made for fifty years and do that one to five years. To make that same way that you do all the five year comprehensive plan. Do a contract with the electrical, the company that you buy electricity from on a one to five years instead of a fifty year plan. We need smaller results. Not the older people dictating for the people that's going to be, they go, y'all going to be gone and we're going to still, our kids still going to be up on the plan that you adopted. So we need a five year plan for everything. Our Gen Z, they are our future. When you appoint somebody to your boards and your different thing. Think about people that are going to bring you concrete information back to you, instead of somebody being your proxy to bring you what you want to hear.
Mr. Driver, we need to put it towards the comprehensive plan.
This is all about the comprehensive plan, because somebody had to come bring that to you and all of that. So you know.
Board appointments, we're talking about the comprehensive plan.
But the board, the comprehensive plan and board, all of it, you know, go hand in hand. Because that's a comprehend, that's comprehensive with you guys. You know, make things better for the little citizens of the city of Griffin. You know, my time is up. Thank you very much.
Please, put your name and address for the record. Anybody else on my left side like coming for the board? Is there anybody on my left side like completely? Is there anybody on my right side like coming for the board? Yes, sir. Name and dress for the record.
My name is Emmanuel Harvey, I live at one seventy-nine Grady Street.
Welcome, Mr. Park.
Thank you, thank you guys for having me. I'm not real good with words, so I got it on my phone.
Yes, sir.
And just bear with me. It kind of piggybacks off of it. My partner just said, just want to emphasize the critical importance of establishing a youth center and a swimming pool within our community. This holds the potential to significantly decrease crime rates while fostering a positive environment for our young residents. A youth center serves as a valuable resource by providing a safe space for youth to engage in constructive activities. By offering educational programs, mentorship opportunities and recreational outlets. We can redirect the energy of our youth for positive endeavors. This not only keeps them occupied, but also helps develop essential life skills and sense of community and belonging. Additionally, the swimming pool contributes to the overall well being of our community. Recreation through swimming not only promotes physical health, but also encourages social interaction among residents. And I can speak directly to this because I was raised in the Griffin City Pool, so I mean. Yeah, I just, I like Ms. Kenner Brew and even before her, Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller had a program, Chester Miller's wife. She had a program when I was a real little kid, if you, if you didn't have money to get in the pool, she'd make you read a book to get in free. It's just things like that, that's what I was raised on, that pool, the neighborhood I came up in. It's right over here by the hospital, terrible neighborhood, I can speak for, terrible. I learned a lot of bad things, a lot of bad things happened in my adult life from that neighborhood. So it being gone is not really a curse, it's a blessing, but at the same time. That neighborhood taught me. By being at that city pool and that service army here when they first built it. It taught me how to look at life from a different, different perspective than what I was living in. So I just, I just want to make sure that you guys understand the significance of activities and things for the youth to do. To occupy their minds, to show them something besides what's directly in their face every day. Being able to paint a picture in your minds of something positive, that, that, that's the power of. A community center or a swimming pool, just the small things, just have, just a kid that's inhale every day. To be able to lay down at night to see a different perspective in their mind, but that's what's going to take them away from that environment, essentially. Well, let me get back to my reading. Research consistently shows that investing in the youth programs and recreational facilities has direct correlation with reduced crime rates. Engaging in the youth in meaningful activities not only prevents them from getting involved. An illicit behavior, but also builds a foundation for responsible and civic minded citizenry. The establishment of the youth center and swimming pool would be an investment in our community's future by providing positive outlets for our youth. We are taking proactive steps toward crime prevention and community development. Can we please find a way for these to be a priority? I understand like they weren't in the bold letters that the guys were talking about and I understand. But sometimes when we come up with planning. And we have whatever the pop, what's our population, our census now, I don't even know. Twenty-three-five. And we only had a hundred and seventy-four online. I mean, we need to try to reach out again before we start making decisions. Don't just reach out and say, we reached out. That's not right, let's reach out and say, okay, let's try again to reach more people, that didn't work, whatever we did to reach out then, it did not work. I didn't know anything about it and I try to be a little knowledgeable, you know what I mean? So I, I just, I applaud you guys for doing your job, I know it's not an easy job. I know it's not easy by a long shot, so I'm not shooting at you like you're not doing anything, because I know you are. But I just wanted to just let you know that as, as a citizen, I grew up here my whole life, I'm forty-three years old. I've been, I've been through terrible things in this city, but I've also grew, grown to love this city, because I was raised in it and I'm here. And I'm somebody behind being from this city. But we have a lot of work to do and I think we all need to try a little harder to do it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Park. Please put your name and address over there, Mr. Harvey. Okay, thank you. Anybody else on my right? Anybody else in the crowd? Again, thank you GMC for your consulting in this and Mr. Johnson, Mr. Coyne and Mr. Jacob. Moving into consents agenda. We have items five through eleven, do we have a motion to approve the consents agenda? We have a motion for Ms. Murray on the consent agenda, do we have a second? Commissioner Ward with a second, any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero on the consent agenda. Moving into regular agenda, under item twelve, consider the minutes of the city Griffin Board of Commissioners workshop meeting on November twenty-eighth. Commissioner Brock and Flowers were absent, do we have a motion to approve? This ward with a motion, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Four, zero, two with Mr. Brock and Ms. Flowers abstaining. Item thirteen is consider the minutes of the city Griffin Board of Commissioners regular meeting on November twenty-eight, twenty-three. Commissioner Flowers was absent, do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero, one with Commissioner Flowers abstaining. Item fourteen is consider the acceptance of Norfolk. Technology. Item fourteen, okay, consider the acceptance of the Norfolk Southern Safety First Grant. An amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the fire department and amend the budget accordingly. Mr. Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item fifteen. Item fifteen, consider acceptance of the brace grant, the amount of five thousand dollars and amend the budget accordingly. Griffin Environmental Council, address if needed. We have motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that'd be fine. Welcome, Mr. Chance, chairman.
My name is Jason Chance, I'm the chairman of the Griffin Environmental Council. We were, we found out about the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation Brace Grant and around September. And it was designed for to reduce litter blight and illegal dumping on public property and to encourage code enforcement efforts. As you all may know, we've been doing stream, stream cleanups every year. And we added in the past few years doing reservoir cleanups out at Hedges Creek Reservoir. We picked up thousands of pounds of tires, illegal dumping, trash out there, hundreds of volunteers have taken part. And we used this grant to get litter control measures. We got the most ridiculous six hundred pound trash cans we could find, so nobody could steal them, or at least if they did, they would break something. We designed educational signage to let people know that it's, they're drinking water, so maybe don't throw trash in it. And it also has the code enforcement number on it, so people can report illegal dumping. And we were awarded that grant in October. So that's it.
And with the environmental council that's here and then this over here, anybody else? Thank you all for your service. Item six, did we vote on that?
No.
Okay, so we've got the motion from Tinsley, second by Murray, all in favor of the grant, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item sixteen is consider resolution approving the standardized form for a league contract to be utilized. At the Griffin Golf Course for League Play and fee structure. Mr. Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item seventeen, consider resolution approving the standardized form for a tournament contract to be utilized at the Griffin Golf Course. Mr. Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item eighteen, it's a resolution adopting updated language access plan required by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. In conjunction with the award of the twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Funds. This is Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item nineteen is considered a master purchasing license agreement and associated order documents for the access framework. Helix Cloud Foundation, Helix Support Cloud from Helix Soul Source. In the amount of four thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars for the telecommunications service expansion. Mrs. Ward with a motion to approve, second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item twenty is considered GMA Hotel Motel Revenue Administration Master Service Agreement with tender litter. The, the Lamas and Associates, HDL, which replaces the previous agreement with the Resource Professional Group, TRPG. HDL partnered with TRPG, facilitate a smooth transition. Mrs. Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item twenty-one is consider resolution adopting revisions to the city Griffin customer service policy. Customer Service Manager, Rita Bagwell is here. And will there be changes on that from what was presented at this point?
No, I have not heard of any.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray.
Coming.
Comment from Commissioner Flower.
I want to say that I appreciate the work that was done on the policy. I think some of the things that were brought up from citizen comments are worth consideration. In the next iteration, I, I want us to make sure that we are doing everything we can to take care of our citizenry. But I do want to acknowledge, I appreciate the effort on this.
And I would like also to say that our customer service policy, when we went into office in oh four, a long time ago. Commissioner Flowers, City Griffin had non-collectible over three million dollars in years, so we made some tough decisions twenty years ago. And part of that was in terms of our, our collection policy. We said it was only a seven day notice, but you actually have fifteen days from the time of the bill addition, so about additional seven days. With actuality, you have twenty two days. There are multiple ways you can pay your bill, automatic draft, automatic. Setup, you can look to bill delivered directly to me. So based on financial responsibility, we have city, all the citizens of Griffin, we have to make tough decisions regarding our political policy. You have a motion from Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Murray. And just answer all that, and now that our. The legally collecting the year is less than three hundred thousand dollars a year compared to three. Which saves everybody money more. So call for question. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six zero. Item twenty two, consider resolution approving the standardized form for the service contract and blanket service contract. For the provision of utility services to customers and cities, combined utility system. Commissioner Murray with a motion, and say goodbye Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six zero. Item twenty three, it's considered resolution adopting proposed changes to the personnel policy. Be effective on January one, twenty twenty four.
Mayor, there are three comments I need to make from this morning. There are three changes. The first one. In Article eleven for payroll. We are removing the addition of payroll fees that was discussed this morning in regards to child support and garnishment, so those will be removed. Um, also in uh correlation to Commissioner McCord's comments this morning. Um, we will. Be removing the dishonest behavior within the FML policy for what you are working. Um, in a job similar to what you have with the city, either caring for your spouse or with your own um. Disability, it will just say you could be subject to disciplinary action rather than saying that it does result in disciplinary or in dishonest behavior. And then lastly, and I think most beneficially for our employees. Um, we are going to keep the sick leave bonus, so I did provide that bonus with you since we did not talk about this morning. Um, and that is on page thirty seven and thirty eight of the current policy. Which allows for a five hundred dollar bonus if um an employee has perfect attendance and a two hundred fifty dollar bonus if. Um, certain number of hours were missed based on whether public safety or non-public safety, so. On behalf of the employees, thank you for um putting that back in there. That is a budgetary expense, but we'll make sure we figure out. Um, how to cover that, and I would ask that the motion address all three of those recommendations from staff.
We've got those um three changes. We have a motion approved with those changes. Mr. Tinsley with a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Ward with a second, question by Commissioner Flower.
On um, the bullet points. Regarding the working while FMLA. There were two bullet points, one addressed doing similar work and one addressed doing any work at all. You modify both bullet points.
We modified both bullet points. They will both just say that the employee could be subject to disciplinary action.
Okay, so so rather than, just I'm not tracking. Uh, that's my bullet. So instead of. No, no work or similar words, then language on both of those now just says possibility of disciplinary action.
Right, because the one that is is similar work elsewhere is if you have, it's your health condition. The other one, if it's no work elsewhere is because you're there to take care of a spouse, child, or other person, parent with a serious health condition.
And and what does disciplinary action look like?
It it would depend on the consequence or depend on the circumstance, rather, if you.
My question, and what is? To me, that's vague.
It is.
Does it mean?
Because it's so fact specific, so let me, if I can give you maybe two examples that came up this morning, one. Um, we have firefighters that have second jobs, and so if they have undergone a serious heart condition. That they are cleared to go return to maybe landscaping, but not cleared to wear an oxygen tank and fight fires. We don't want them to not be able to do that first job just because they can't do the second one. But at the same time, if you have someone that sits at their desk all day and is. Doing paperwork and they can, and they're doing that somewhere else, that's a problem, and you need to come back to work and do that here for us.
Okay, I'll give an example of grass cutting, if someone. Got a primary job at the grass cutting, and they're out. Grass cutting on their own.
Okay, so let me tell you why I don't agree from personal experience with the second. Uh, computer work. Um. I was doing computer work and I was unable to sit in my office chair due to an injury, but I was not unable to sit on my bed.
And that's why we're not trying to address every single issue that's going to come up, because that's different than what I just said, in my opinion, which is why it could result in disciplinary action, but not necessarily.
Okay, I I have another question.
Yes, please.
This is not about either of those three things. First of all, I appreciate y'all making those adjustments. If somebody will tell me about the language, I'm looking at the highlight document. It's on page five. Where we're addressing family medical leave for the pregnant. Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and Pregnancy Discrimination Act. Um, I want to know if the language in number four is standard language or language that we added. Page five of the highlight document. Number four. Down that has four bullet points under. I want to know if that language is standard or if we've added that.
Mr. Woods, do you, I don't remember where number one, the little i.
Mm-hmm, additions to the current policy on family medical leave to include. And then there are specifications about type of.
Delivery and the sick leave.
Is that standard language or is that language that we've added?
As far as the vaginal delivery, that is language we have.
Okay, I have a problem with that. Because it is not my business whether somebody delivered a baby vaginally or by cesarean. If you can get the time off.
This, this isn't about the person that delivered the baby.
That's what I'm saying. It ain't my business. If so, if someone's spouse. It it, if they got the time off, it, I, that's just, I don't feel like that's our business for someone to have to come and report to us and justify. Why they should be allowed a time off.
And it's not management's business, but as an HR representative, legally, we do have the right to know that, so we can determine. If it is family medical leave and how long the period of time it would be for that. So it's not something that a direct supervisor. It's not something that a direct supervisor has the right to know because that's protected health information. But as the human resources director, I do to determine if it qualifies for family medical leave or not. Of course, that period of time is up to twelve weeks. The difference between vaginal and C-section. Has to do with how long the spouse is out of work.
Right, so so let me ask you that. So going back to my original question. Is the language and the stipulations standard language or is those parameters that we've put in that two weeks can be for vaginal? And four for, so I, because I'm a hundred percent understanding FMLA has parameters, so no challenge to that. My question at that point then is, is this language specific? To FMLA or are these parameters that we have attached? These are parameters we've attached.
Regarding, uh, and it it really has to do with how much time the spouse can take for sick leave to take care of their spouse.
They're welcome to take vacation leave and other leave that they have, but sick leave is, we're recommending that it be a certain period of time.
And what's our, what is it, what are we doing now? Prior to this proposal.
It was as much sick leave as you had.
So we could have a firefighter out for. Six weeks taking care of a wife that is perfectly fine. I mean, she had a natural childbirth, she's at home. So that's kind of.
She is not perfectly fine. Um, so so I guess my answer to that is. I would feel more comfortable, and I know that we're at the protocol. I would feel more comfortable if there were not a distinction between vaginal and cesarean, if we just say in birth period. Um, because it's very assumptive on our part that someone who has had a vaginal delivery is. A okay in two weeks for that person to come back, and I think it's unfair. Um, because oftentimes those things change at the last minute and plans may have been made based on one standard. And then you get to the hospital and now something is different. So I just personally, that's not the only thing that I'm not comfortable with in the personnel policy, but that for me. Is a, is a no-go. I understand why it exists, and so there's no challenge to whether or not it makes sense on paper. I'm just worried about um what that implication looks like. Again, just as as related to that, because there's. It, you got a baby, I mean, it whether it came out vaginally or by cesarean, you have a brand new baby. And so I don't know that it's, for me. I don't think, I think that there is enough going on in the household that that how the baby was delivered doesn't make a difference.
What would, what would y'all prefer that we do as a board?
Well, we, FLA has special. Or FMLA. Uh, has. Specific guidelines.
This is not within FMLA. This is something that we placed in because they have twelve weeks regardless to take. That doesn't have anything to do with FMLA. What we were noticing is an abuse of sick leave. Based on a sickness that was not their own. However, from the board's perspective, I'd like to know what you would like us to do. If you do not want us to to delineate between the two, that is fine. We can leave it as. Nothing. We can put in four weeks for any delivery. We can leave it as is, but I need a consensus from the board.
So before, they were just allowed to use as much sick leave as they had, and if it ran out, they didn't get paid, they could use.
Correct, as long as they have sick leave, and then they, and then they would use vacation time. But the issue is is not necessary that the person giving birth, it's the, it's the caregiver. And how much sick time we will allow them to use of their own time. Um, because they're not the one sick, they're taking care of the person, but we've learned that in a lot of cases, they may be out of work with us for six weeks getting sick pay. But they're working another job. And so we're, we're trying to prevent that. We're not trying to prevent care of the person and. And we do have it stated in there that if there is a complication that that might trigger. Um, a different ser- serious health condition and that that. We relook at that situation, so it becomes a case by case. A basis, but that's something that only HR can legally determine. It's not something that. Um, is is shared amongst supervisors and again, it's protected health information.
So for me to be perfectly clear currently. If you have a cesarean birth or a vaginal birth. What is, what is currently what an employee is entitled to?
The employee that.
Not the one that's having the baby, but.
The caregiver is two weeks. It is two weeks.
Two weeks.
Only two weeks.
Plus.
Of sick time. Now, they can take up to twelve weeks by law for family medical leave, but as far as accrued sick leave, they can only use two weeks of their time.
Okay, and then this proposal. If you're. A vaginal delivery.
We're being a little bit more gracious for a C-section. Um, allowing four weeks instead of two weeks because it is a more generally, a more complicated. Um, procedure and and requires more recovery time.
So what is the change that I know the two to four?
That's it.
So that's the only.
That's the only change.
This change with.
Yes, sir.
Giving, being more liberal.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I I had. It's just a lot in the policy that I can dump. Um. And um, that that sticks out for me, but I I'll ask you my other question. Again, I know we're in the voting phase. I ain't trying to hold up. Um, the additional question I had was. What is our policy now, um, when people donate sick leave? And it's unused? Does it, because I saw, I had to read the proposal because my stuff isn't working. Does that now go to a bank or what happens to it now when someone donates it and it's unused?
Well, and we've had several cases of this, so let's say an employee ends up receiving eight hundred hours of sick donations. Um, so that employee gets eight hundred hours given to their sick bank. Now, they may only be out up to the maximum period of family medical leave for twelve weeks for a surgery, let's say it's related to their heart. And so they come back to work after four weeks. And they still have all this excess time that was donated to them, and so then what's happening is then we've seen it many times that the employee then says, well, I'm gonna have knee surgery. Because I had all this time that was donated to me when I had my heart surgery. And so it, it kind of defeats the purpose of donating because it's, that's not what the cause was for. And so then we have these employees with a large amount of sick time. And they're not using it for the sick time in which they had. So what we would do is once that person.
Mayor, would you ask the audience, y'all can actually hear, please?
Audience, please take your time quiet. That we can understand what's being discussed up here.
So in this case, let's say you return to work after four weeks, so whatever sick time was donated to you that you did not use because you were medically able to come back to work, it would go into a bank. Of sick time that we would have for other employees. Uh, for when they have a a sickness that qualifies for serious health condition, and then that would be a bank that we would. Manage and we'd probably form a council to help manage that, to have it for employees that need it in the future.
Um. Point of question about that is. Is it possible to return it to those who donated?
Administratively, you, there's no way to know whose hour did they use first, so no, we don't think that's a good plan. If I donated ten and she donated ten and she only used fifteen. Who gets five back?
Right.
So it just, we think the fairest way to do it is to put it in a sick bank.
But then the ones that donated, they can always go into that. Process where they get our stuff from.
Right. Correct.
So.
I'm just gonna say, okay. I I don't. I don't like that. I understand why, because how do you get it back if it's a portion of of whatever? Um, but I don't like that if, what did you do, for example, because you always get hurt, something happens to you. If I give him my sick hours. Um, I might have wanted like to have that for myself, but I call myself being like humanitarian. Oh, Doug is my friend, I want to take care of him. Um. But but I wouldn't have normally given them away. I would have maintained them for myself. I I don't like that someone was kind and gracious in in the. It wasn't used and now they just lost it. That's the part for me where it's like you, you, you did something time for somebody, you don't, there's no recompense. Understand, that makes perfect sense why you can't just pass them back out. Um, but I don't necessarily, I wish there were a better answer. I like the bank. But I still, that that's a little discretionary for me about even how that gets. Utilized because. What if I gave you two hundred sick hours and then when it's time for me to go to the bank, there's only twenty in there? Um, I'm still at a, I'm at a deficit and.
People could then donate to you outside of the bank.
Okay, so, so I understand, I I'm just not aware that. Right, you hope that they like you, and I, and I guess that's part of it is that. That some people will benefit that may not have because. Maybe they don't have that many friends at work. Um, where other people would not, so I I understand it, I just, I wish that that were different. I don't feel strongly about that now that you've explained it as I did about the the previous item. Those are the questions I have to decide.
Mayor, I don't, we don't have an answer on the delivery. Hate to bring that back up, but I need to know from. The board's perspective, what you want to do. Okay.
Is it more liberal?
Yes, right now you only get two weeks regardless.
No, we're giving.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Until we've had a motion for Commissioner Tinsley, a second by Commissioner Ward, any other discussion? All in favor with the three changes that we have brought this evening? Please signal by raising your hand.
What's a problem?
Okay, all against. Therefore, to Commissioner Flowers, you want to vote against the um. Personnel policy change. Please say it. Commissioner Ward. Done good? Say again? Yes, ma'am.
That's fine. She can second a motion to be able to discuss. That's perfectly fine.
There'll be an item twenty four. Consider a, consider the Griffin Spalding County Hospital Authority Grant Allocation for Year Two Thousand Twenty Four, requiring city and county approval. Does a motion go for? Mr. Brock with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six zero. Item twenty five, consider resolution adopting visions to certain City Griffin organizational charts. Which uh, imagine as we finally will address.
We have uh four different changes tonight. The first one coming from planning and development with the addition of animal controls. So we are asking that animal control be removed. From the police department and placed under the code enforcement supervisor. It is more synonymous with code enforcement than it is a sworn officer position, so we think that will make. A better fit for our animal control officers there. Um, in public works, we are separating out some of the divisions so that there is um some supervisory responsibility for the operations manager in public works. Mr. Hardy will be responsible for the cemetery of Fleet Service. Mr. Hardy will be responsible for the cemetery, fleet services, and facilities maintenance in that role. Um, and everyone else, as well as he and the administrative coordinator would still report to Ms. Eller as the director. In the fire department, we are, um, updating the position of operations officer to assistant fire chief. The three battalion chiefs that, uh, represent the operations of the shift would report to the assistant fire chief. The administrative coordinator, the fire marshal, and the fire inspector would continue to report to the fire chiefs, sort of your prevention and admin. The fire chief, operations to assistant fire chief. And then the biggest change is in our police department, where we are asking to add an assistant police chief who will be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the, um, department with, uh, the captain of uniform patrol and the captain of criminal investigations reporting to the assistant police chief. The captain of administrative services would still report to the, the police chief. And, and then also within those departments, we are adding, requesting to add, uh, a traffic unit specific to accidents um, and driving infractions with a sergeant and four officers. Also, we would be removing a lieutenant from two shifts and putting one under the administrative, um, capacity with the uniform patrol captain. One would be subject to, um, the supervision of the AMV shift and the other one over C and D shift. The other lieutenant would then go to community outreach in the administrative services division, where they would have a sergeant and a police officer reporting to that position specific to community outreach. And then lastly, we would also install a fit unit, which is a field investigations team specialized to whatever the issue is at that particular time. Right now, for example, we always have a downtown and shopping center detail during the holidays, so that unit could help um, with those kind of details, which would also be, um, under the, um, supervisory aspects of a sergeant with four officers. And those are the changes that we are recommending at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Your motion to approve the. Um, order them to chart, Ms. Murray with a motion, with a second. Commissioner Ward with a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please signal a motion again. Six, zero. And then item twenty-six that we added. Motion, uh, consider an agreement for sale, purchase of real property in amount of hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. We noticed people like Junior property, that will see in City Griffin, the property two nineteen East Bank Street. And that's the, um, parking lot that is kind of behind the, um, courthouse and stash studio. Mr. Murray with a motion to approve, seems like Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal a motion again. And the six, zero, my name's Henry, we paid for that without a tad funds.
Yes, sir, there'll be a budget on the net in our quarterly, can you not to account for those funds?
All right, so that's our agenda tonight. Moving into city manager's report.
Uh, first, let me just thank, um, everybody for being here tonight, it was nice to see a crowd with some opinions. Um, and also to excuse our police officers that just jumped up, they are headed to Walmart to do shop with a cop in seventeen minutes. So not trying to be rude, they're just trying to, uh, make it to the kids waiting on them. And also wanna congratulate Lieutenant Smith on his strongest link in the chain award. He did, um, inform me that he might come dirty from his second job and, and he did that, so, um, glad he was here to be able to accept that. And a big congratulations to our water distribution system as well, I'm glad to see that the work that they are doing is being recognized, um, throughout the nation and, and particular our state. Um, also, welcome to Commissioner Curtis and Commissioner Wright from their swearing in, we look forward to having them here on January first. But I would be remiss not to tell Commissioner Brock and Commissioner Flowers, thank you. It has been a great, um, several years of working with you, I'll miss your expertise, your, your calmness that you bring to us, your willingness to question, um, it's always, always very good discussion, it makes me think. So I, I very much appreciate the times that we've had together, and I'll look forward to seeing you in a more, um, citizen capacity next time. And that's it.
I wanna again congratulate Cora and David for the service they've given the city, they both turned very well. We're gonna miss. Let me wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Brock, your last time.
No, I prayed it home last Saturday night, and I heard it since through Saturday morning, I heard it in church service. After we went to bed. The parade, you know, is, not the best parade we've played in the last few years.
That was great.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin.
Ditto on everyone so far, so good to see you, really full of diesel, and, um. Congratulations, Mr. Brock, Commissioner Flowers, from your retirement, I'm going to miss you greatly. And, uh, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Commissioner Black.
Um, so first, since Mr. Brock brought up the parade, um. I think it's very fitting, I don't know if anyone saw the newspaper today. Um, but the floats that I made and came up with in my imagination, I know y'all can see this. The little gingerbread house float that was in the parade, I want y'all to know it's the biggest picture on the front of the newspaper, and I was responsible for that. Um, so I was not getting the parade, but my clothes were in the parade, and we made it to the top of the newspaper. Um, but beyond that, I, I just want to deeply and most appreciatively thank all of you, um, for having me for all of these years, the community for having me for all of these years. Uh, I am ready to go, but I will miss it, um, I'm definitely going to miss asking questions. Um, and I promise to come back in some informal citizen capacity and, uh, ask as many questions. I don't know how many answers I'll get, but I'll definitely be back to ask questions, but, um. It is, it is a, it is difficult for me to imagine not having to be up here. Um, but I am grateful for the experiences and grateful for all the relationships and, um. Yeah, I think I'm just in space of gratitude, and I appreciate everyone coming out and the, and the participation in being able to see the growth. Cause we have time. Um, and those, it has not always been positive, and it's not always been conclusive. Um, and there definitely were places where we were stagnant and didn't know where to go next or how to get there. Um, and to be at a point where now we have a comprehensive plan, and it's just part of the language about how we move the community forward. I don't know what expectations there can be. Um, and so this is one of those things where I, I kinda had to check myself about like, most people won't sit in the seat. Um, and most people won't participate in government at this level, just because there's only so many positions, um. But I feel very safe complaining going in the future, because we always tell people, don't complain if you haven't tried or if you haven't done it. And I have put my sixteen year in there, so I feel comfortable complaining until the very end. Um, and I just wanted to thank everyone for the support all over, uh, throughout my entire tenure, so that's it, I'm just, I'm out.
It's been on top of it.
We've already got a good point, so.
But, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss y'all. Um, it's been, it's been the, the last few years, we, we really have a good team. Um, I think we. With you two, we've accomplished a lot. Uh, like Cora said earlier, we haven't always agreed, but we disagree a river. Um, and, um, I hope I don't miss that. Um, but I just. Cora, I, I'm, I'm really glad that you are able to do this. I know what you sacrificed, I know that you're a world traveler. I know that you work hard to get to a position where you could like work in a way that you want to, and, um. You sacrifice a lot more probably than I would at your age. Uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell y'all. But, um, Merry Christmas, let me try.
Mr. Tend. Said it for last exchange, it sounds like a fun lot to you guys. Hope it will work forward, and, uh. Mr. Wright, Mr. Curtis, welcome aboard. I don't know where you're getting it from. And, uh, all you're saying, you, uh, you surprised us. Long time we don't have anybody that directs it here, so it's nice to see that funny guy, always smiling face. And just Merry Christmas, and I hope everybody has, has a healthy and positive.
So to close out, my tip, I thank Mr. Eric Oddburn for being here tonight, as well as Mr. Johnson, Mr. Coin from DMC. We appreciate y'all's service to our community and the recognition and the future relationship. To Mrs. Gibbs and Mrs. Martin, um, understand your points, but again, respectfully, have to agree with this free on some things, but we appreciate you coming and expressing, um, your concerns. And Mr. Donald Driver, we've gone back and forth regards to recreation centers, we've got city law. But we got, we have Spalding County is the, is, and we did for the record, Spalding County is the facilitator for recreation funding, we have city park, fair bond, we have volunteer organizations such as Salvation. Ladies, it's my time, thank you. So we've got opportunities, I mentor students, there are opportunities, um, to mentor students, there's opportunities to service coaching. And serve through your church and different things to mentor. It's not necessarily the city burdened responsibility to provide services you asked for tonight. We gave Spalding County opportunity to build this wonderful city park. And Spalding County chose to build it about three and a half miles outside of the city limits. And I can't wait for them. They took the responsibility to build the school, and so we have to depend on them based on our internal agreement of what they were dealing with. But again, Mr. Driver, thank you, Mr. Oddburn, I love your ideas, we'd love to have a chance to sit down and talk with you in the future. And thank you for coming tonight. Again, want to echo about the downtown events this, this past several weeks, um, between the counties and City Griffin Economic Development Department, Danielle and Heather and everybody else, all did amazing jobs this, this year. Um, and David, eight years, good job, sir. You stepped into big shoes of Mrs. Todd, and you did a great job, and we appreciate your service. And to Miss Cora, you've been like a sister to me, even I'm a little younger sister, I've never had a sister. But you have been a true, true states lady. You've grown up from just coming out of high school to being a young professional, earned multiple degrees, you've traveled the world. You, um, are successful, and you're an inspiration to so many, we're so proud to have had the opportunity for you representing Griffin the past sixteen of the twenty years, and it's been a joy to be with you. And of course, if I, you get a text message from me, you need to hold your breath, count to three, and then call me back tomorrow.
I'm changing my number.
So, but we love you, we're proud of you. And, um, again, wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas to our city staff and employees. We've accomplished a lot this year from the tornado event and the recovery. We are truly blessed because of your hard work and commitment to us, and to Mr. Wayland, Miss O'Connor. God bless you, thank y'all. Merry Christmas to all, we have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Tend with a motion, second by this. Flower, flowers, no more commission.
I know, flowers is out.